Sure that the public in this mask or understand. If you do nothing, you get all six, the classic of classes of licenses. You get all six classes. And it begins with a cultivator license and it ends with a retailer license. And everything in between, including wholesale, et cetera. The one thing you can't do is you cannot prohibit delivery of cannabis in your municipality from other locations. In other words, you can't prohibit, if there's a place in Hamilton Township that sells cannabis and delivers, you can't, you can't stop them from coming in. One of the issues that many municipalities are dealing with is there are no regulations yet for the cannabis industry. The Cannabis Regulatory Commission, and I attended their meeting yesterday. They have not adopted regulations and they're not going to adopt regulations until after your date, which is August 21st. So municipalities such as Upper Township, Stone Harbor, Avalon, the Wildwoods have all opted out. And so we want to see, we want to see what the regulations are and we want to see what the experiences of other municipalities who are essentially getting paid. I think what's going to happen with these licenses, they're very restricted now, they only go out periodically. It's a request for applications. They only go out periodically and in the medicinal field, that made sense because it was so restricted with the adult use. I think you're going to see that become more relaxed as it goes down the road and as municipalities have experience with it. I don't know what Waymoth has done.
We just said it tonight.
What did you do?
We voted no on all five of those and if we could stop the delivery, we would have done it because Waymoth Township wants nothing to do with encouraging drug use.
So, I mean, a lot of municipalities are opting out so that they can get their feet on the ground. The other, the other philosophy is that those who are cannabis friendly might be considered more favorably by cannabis businesses if that's what you're looking to do. I think the problem with Waymoth or Stella Manor, you're remote and it's, to manufacture in a warehouse here and cultivate it and process it and then ship it to the market, it doesn't make a lot of sense if you can put it in the market. The place they're considering in Pleasantville is the old Atlantic City Press site on Devon's Lane, which is right across from, I guess, Sam's. So.
And McDonald's. Boy Castle.
So, I, you know, I mean, I, and, so what I did was I crafted two potential ordinances for, for city council to consider. And, and the cannabis committee, we spent a lot of time. We had about two, two and a half hour meeting. And it was, it was the mayor, it was Mr. Dilj, Walter Dilj, and Dennis Miller and myself and Brittany Benetti from my office, who is one of the lead attorneys in the state on cannabis. So, we had, we had a good group of people. There was some consensus reached, but I can tell you that some people had reservations about any cannabis. And everybody agreed that there should be no retail anywhere. And everybody agreed that there should be nothing in the village though. Whether it's cultivation or processing or whatever.
And nothing within the federal 1,000 foot.
Nothing within the zone.
Dull drive school zone areas.
Correct, correct. So, I crafted an ordinance, that was the first one I sent you, that was based largely on the categories in the Bayonne, City of Bayonne ordinance. Bayonne has a very comprehensive ordinance. It was one of the first and people are looking at it, which has, it covers pretty much everything. Bayonne has everything, they want everything, but that's Bayonne, that's not Stella Manor. And then at the request of Councilman Dilj, I crafted a second ordinance, which was based on the sample ordinance of the League of Municipalities, which is the opt-out ordinance, which everybody, I'm sure, waited followed that model too. Now, today, the Mel Jif sent you two pieces of literature, one of which was their, their analysis of the lack of regulations and they have their own opt-out ordinance. And they also sent you a, you didn't get it, but they sent a pamphlet of the environmental concerns dealing with cannabis from, from traffic to brown water, to air pollution, odors, all of those factors. So, I can, I didn't get a warm and fuzzy feeling from the Mel Jif and there's not a warm and fuzzy feeling from the League of Municipalities. So, but they're, they've incentivized it with significant potential revenue if you're lucky enough to get a facility. But, you know, again, I think those are going to be localized facilities, they're going to be densely populated areas. You're not coming, the fact that you folks have a ton of land doesn't mean anything when you come to a cannabis facility. It's a warehouse.
So, if we, can you go over the legality if you opt out?
If you opt out, so, so, thank you for reminding me. If you, if you do nothing, you're in it for five years at all potential levels. If you opt out, then you can come back in at any time that you choose. So, if you get the regulations and you're satisfied with the regulations, I mean, for instance, delivery vehicles, you know, it's, they're not going to have wraps on them that say, you know, pot to go or something like that. I mean, there's, there's going to be specific regulations on how these vehicles can identify themselves, but we're not sure what those regulations are because they haven't come out yet.
And so New Jersey, you're going to be very, very.
I think it's going to be very tight regulation. I think it's going to be treated much like the Casino Control Commission. So, I think you're going to, and the Casino Control Commission, for those of you who were here when it came in in the late seventies, they were incredibly rigid. And then as time went on and they got a little bit more experience, the rigidity lessened to some extent. I mean, when they denied Hilton a license, that's how bad it was back in the late eighties. So, you know, I think you'll see that change over time, but a lot of municipalities are cautious and, you know, I think more than, more than half have opted out. Now, Ocean City opted out, but Ocean City, you know, isn't going to opt out of anything. So, they don't count, but Upper opted out, which I thought was interesting. And the Wildwoods opted out, which I thought was also interesting.
What does Hamilton Township do?
Hamilton Township intends to be cannabis friendly. So, I talked to their mayor as recently as last night. They are encouraging it to the extent that they can in industrial park. And, you know, that's, that's the philosophy that they have. Galloway Township is on the board on, they're not sure what they're going to do. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's a policy issue that you folks and your council need to address. It's something new, but you can all, if you choose to opt out for now, to catch your breath and to see what happens with these regulations and what happens with the experience of other municipalities, you can always opt in.
It's a lot of danger what that is. But here for August the 21st, first, my instinct's telling me that these licenses that are already spoken for, they're now going to proceed to move forward as to where they're going to locate now that they know which towns are available. They're not going to stand around and wait for another town to decide.
No, that's not, that's not accurate. In order to apply for these licenses, you have to have site control.
So, meaning?
They've already picked where they're going.
They've already picked where they're going?
Yes. And, and the medical growers are going to get priority because they've already been vetted and they've already been proven.
They've already said where they're going to go.
They, you have to demonstrate site control as part of your application.
So, we don't have to worry about anything, we don't have to do nothing then?
Well, there's going to be, I mean, listen, there's going to be opportunity in the future if there's going to be opportunity at all. And I'm not recommending you do one thing or another, I'm just telling you that a lot of municipal officials are very cautious with this, especially in smaller towns.
And there's measures that are in place to prevent the odor from dispersing into the.
Well, the Bayonne ordinance that I sent you.
I heard that they have scrubbers.
Yeah, the Bayonne.
To control all the odors going through?
The Bayonne ordinance that I modeled my first draft after had a requirement for odor neutralizing, and that included scrubbers and, and I'm assuming that, I mean, Mr. Dilj would probably know a lot more about this than me, considering he deals with commercial kitchens, but I'm assuming you can, you can scrub the air before it exits the building. And I'm sure it's an expensive process and you have to hire Mr. Dilj's ex-company to do it. But I'm sure that it can be done.
But then again, we're also forgetting to mention that these companies will be making in excess of $20 million a year, every year. It's a lot of money that they'll be making.
We don't know that.
It's all speculation and, and again.
There's a formula.
But again, the speculation is that they're going to go in more densely populated areas. That's where their desires are going to be. I don't think they're coming to Waymoth or to Estelle.
I have a question, is this, is this still illegal in his eyes of the government?
Mr. Van Der's is not.
But, see, here's, here's, here's the issue. That's really a legitimate question. It's depending on who eyes you're looking through. Federal government, yes, it's still controlled dangerous substance, it's on the schedule, it's illegal. So, that's why you're not seeing interstate business happening because it's, it's legal in New Jersey, but it's not legal to cross state lines with marijuana. So, you're not going to have people growing it in upstate New York or, and Potter County, Pennsylvania or someplace and bringing it in. That's not going to happen. So, you have, you've got to grow in New Jersey, you've got to process it in New Jersey, you got wholesale in New Jersey and you've got to retail in New Jersey. So, it, and marijuana has been substantially decriminalized, even black market marijuana that, you know, high school kids are buying or whatever. You know, that has been decriminalized, but that's not legalized.
Can you explain what council's called upon to do tonight?
Well, you're, here's the process. You have to determine the path that you want to take for your city. You have to determine whether you want to opt out or whether you want to introduce the first ordinance that I drafted that's based on the Bayonne and based on the committee, the cannabis, the out cannabis committee recommendations, whether you want to introduce that at first reading.
So, do we make a motion?
To do what?
Well, it's going to, you're adopting an ordinance. Either, either way, we're introducing the ordinance on first reading. So, what happens after the first reading is that since this ordinance touches upon land use regulations, it will have to be sent to your planning board for their review and comment. And their principal review is whether the ordinance is consistent with the master plan, but they also can make whatever comments they want. Okay?
Did you draft two ordinance?
I did.
One is an opt-out and one is we're going forward.
One is going forward with restrictions.
Okay. So, are we being charged then with picking one and voting?
Or modifying, so here's the process. The process is this is being introduced at first reading, whichever one you choose. It then goes to the planning board. The planning board reviews it and comments on it. It has to be relisted then for a second reading and public comment. If you make changes, substantial changes in the proposed ordinance as first read, then you begin the process again because you have to give notice to the public of the ordinance that you're intending to adopt on second reading. So, then, then you, then you take the modified ordinance and then you list that for a second, a second reading and for public comment again. So, the public can see that modified ordinance and then make a decision as to what their position is. And the other, so either way, that's, that's the process. If, if you want a more deliberate process, then the way you do it is you opt out for now and then maybe further review it once the regulations come out.
I move we opt out.
A second.
Do you second it?
You don't want, you don't want to invite the public to give their comments on this? Don't we have to make an act, take, take action first?
Well, public comment really.
Something to say like, well, we were going to approve a contract for RCC?
Ah, that's fine, you want to open it to the public?
Sure, I'm going to make a motion.
I would, I would draw my move.
Well, no, no, you have a motion, you have a second. And now there's a motion to open it to the public by the mayor. Is there a second to that? And, and understand by law, you don't have to open it to the public until second reading. You want to do it now.
Okay. And I would like to limit it to maximum of three minutes per person.
Okay, there's been a motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone for the public?
Is there any way, because this is a federal law that, that New Jersey's breaking, is there any way that they could stop giving you money for federal grants or anything like that for your area or for your state of New Jersey because you're breaking the law?
Hasn't stopped any of California's funding. Yeah, I don't, I, it's, it's an interesting question. We're Colorado, but I don't think that they've done that in any other state.
And by the way, Mr. Van Der, there's Cory Booker who is proposing legislation to make it legal nationwide.
But remember, the federal law prohibits the transportation across state lines of a controlled dangerous substance. So, and then once it's in the state, then it becomes a province of the state. So, we're not condoning, New Jersey's never condoned violating the federal commerce laws, interstate commerce laws.
Well, since, Mr. Allen, since anybody's, they want to come here, nobody wants to come here because we don't have city water, we have wells. So, I mean, if they put the type of pot, it's to get that much water that they're going to need, I mean, they're just not going to get that.
And you don't have sewer.
And we don't have sewer. Well, they would put, they would pump their water back into the ground.
Probably recycle.
They would recycle the water, but, I mean, that's, you're talking more money than anybody was going to spend.
Mr. Goslin? Well, yeah, I, I suppose I would go and, and, and of course pumping the water back into the ground goes to the DEP's concern with the brown water and, and all of that. Anyway, my thoughts on it are that it's good to go slow. I don't think that right now we really do know enough. There aren't the regulations. We're a small community that is a great big carrot that we kind of hear about. It seems like it's almost Christmas, we would get a half a million dollars a year. But as I listened to the presentation the other week at the zoning board, there was one term that kept on coming up when they talked about these facilities. I, I mean, I have had a couple reactions to it, but armed guards at these facilities as well. Armed guards? Now, I have a visceral. Armed guards at these facilities. Bottom line is, as I kept on hearing the term armed guards used over and over and over again. Now, we have a community that has a handful of businesses in it, but never any that I considered that would require armed guards. Now, I, I have a different viewpoint about guns, I, I don't, I won't get into that. I have a city boys' idea of guns, guns are trouble, armed guards are for the fact that somebody perceives that there might be trouble. So, that said, I have a visceral reaction to that. I don't know that we need it. I don't know that we need it. Sure, it would be nice if that magic pot of gold at the end of the rainbow came true. And I think I agree with Mr. Lafferty, I believe Mr. Lafferty when he says, as the state feels its way into this, things will open up, things will open up. They'll determine, okay, we do need more of that pot down there in South Jersey, you know? And, and money, money will indeed drive it. When the money interests see that there's a reason and when the, the market shows itself that there's a need, it'll come here and if, at the time, it seems to make sense for us, let those people that are going to be here at that time make that decision because I likely, I likely will be over to Rocky's by then.
Thank you, Mr. Goslin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the analysis that your solicitor has given you shows that having a facility is, all pun intended, a pipe dream at this point. So, opting out, you know, in truth, doesn't cost you anything because you weren't going to get it anyway, even if someone has property they think would work, because after all, that would be something the landfill could do, but there's too many other problems there and it's not going to happen. But one thing that probably should be looked at, and I don't know if it's in the opt-out at this point, would be prohibiting smoking of cannabis products in and around our school and athletic fields. Not necessarily looking at that being something where the police are called, but if we tell people we're prohibiting it, one would hope that at least general moral persuasion would keep that from occurring when we got a bunch of kids around.
We're rolling into our smoking ordinance anyway, we need to do that. Rolling into our smoking ordinance anyway, don't we have a smoking ordinance? We have a smoking ordinance that says you cannot smoke on this property, you can't smoke on soccer field property, you can't smoke at the school property, so therefore smoking is smoking.
Smoking is smoking.
So, we already have an ordinance that says you can't do it.
And there's obviously other products, so that's where I was going with that.
If you can't smoke a cigar, you can't smoke a pipe, but obviously you're not going to smoke a joint. So, smoking is smoking, we already have a smoke free ordinance. Anyone else in the public? Well, if I could just comment.
I figured there's a little more new ones there, thank you.
Yeah, there is. I mean, the question is public use of cannabis products. And it's not just smoking of a pipe or a joint. There are other cannabis products, there's vaping, there are oils, there are ingestibles. I mean, council, it's not, it doesn't have to be done tonight, but if you want to look at an ordinance, I think Galloway actually has adopted one prohibiting the use of cannabis products in public places. You can't prohibit it on private property, of course, but if you want to look into that, I can look into that.
I think that's been discussed already. Can you help me here at the mayor's meeting that we had last? I think there's a couple of towns that have already passed an ordinance.
We just said Galloway.
Was it, was it? No, Northfield is, that's against us. They've already voted not to opt out. No, Northfield, weren't they the one town, I thought, that said that they have an ordinance that says any public areas consumption of any, any of it is prohibited? Honestly, I don't remember that, but I know that Northfield mayor chair was very adamant in this committee that they wanted to report to us.
They opted out?
So, we'll just, we'll tweak our ordinance with the gov and we'll just simply incorporate cannabis of any type whatsoever, whether it be ingestible, whether it be gummy bears or teddy bears or.
Caddles, et cetera.
I'd be happy, I'd be happy to look into that.
Is it legal to sit outside and smoke a joint, best legal one?
No, because you had to have gotten a pot legally in the first place.
But if I got it legally in the first place?
If you have medicinal, if you have medicinal, you can smoke anywhere in your property.
On my property, if I can't walk around and do it?
Not anywhere where there's a non-smoking ordinance, but you can walk around and eat or.
Eat a cookie?
But if it's for medicinal purposes, you have to have, you have to have gotten it, you couldn't have gotten it from like the corner or someplace. You had to have gotten it from a medicinal outlet.
Because the legal stuff is called cannabis, the illegal stuff is still called marijuana.
Well, just real quickly, one of the issues Waymoth has is that we have Lethem Landing in the Oaks where in the Oaks, the porches are, could be 10 feet apart and Lethem Landing, they have shared porches. And we've already had complaints of cigarette smoke, pot smoke. And if you're in the apartment next door and you're sitting on your back porch and there's a piece of lattice work that separates you from the porch next to you and the guy next to you has medicinal marijuana, you know, it's going right into the kitchen with the kids and stuff and it's medicinal, it's nothing you can do about it. But the part here was once this tiger gets out of the cage, it's just, to me, my philosophy, and this was personal, is I know a lot of pot heads. I don't think anyone of them would want to shit, so, I'm sorry.
As a highly technical, what is that, sociological term?
We have a V essence psychology of it here. Anyone else in the public, please?
Move and close it, public?
All in favor?
Joe, don't spell that wrong, please. So, we're back to this discussion on council.
I'm not sure what I'm spelling here, Ken.
So, we're just back to discussion on council about whether or not we're going to opt out?
About the opt-out ordinance, you made a motion.
There was a motion.
There's a motion.
Also, I made a motion, my commentary is it. I don't think it's appropriate for any jurisdiction that doesn't have its own police force, there are too many inherent risks to it. We don't have a police, we don't have anything like a police force. I don't think that we have the apparatus in-house here in City Hall to manage the compliance. By that, I mean, much like you said about the Casino Control Commission, those municipalities that entertain pot operations will have a reporting responsibility in that they're supposed to glean certain information from the operation and then they process that information and report it to the cannabis commission in Trenton. You know, we can't, we've had a hard time buying a dump truck. We, we cannot properly manage that, I don't think. And I don't think that it's, it would be prudent of us to go out to the public or taxpayers and say, we want to invest X amount of dollars into putting together an administrative apparatus that will make us compliant with reporting what our cannabis operations do on the assumption that we can get it back in license fees and et cetera, et cetera. I don't, I, I had brought to my attention very recently that it may have an adverse effect on real estate values and thinking about it, it can have a very adverse effect on real estate values, that for sure, there's a whole big block of potential future buyers that won't want anything to do with this because we got pot here. So, my, I mean, my, my pretty strong vote is to opt out for this time. And the good news about opting out is we can get back in anytime, whatever form it takes in the future, if we can protect ourselves better from it as we watch other. Another thing I've learned is there are a lot of things in life I don't want to be the first kid on my block to do. This is one of them, I don't want to be the first kid on my block to do this. I, I think we should opt out, I'll vote opt out.
My thought is we don't have a, we don't have a, we have an acting clerk, we don't have a city clerk yet, so we don't have someone here that's going to facilitate all that for us. So, my vote would be to opt out at this, at this point.
There was a motion, there was a second, so we're actually, we're all closed, and Mrs. Sparks has been bypassed.
I'd like to opt out also. I think that.
I second you, so I'd like to opt out.
You want me to call a roll, Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dilj?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Wait, is it yes?
Yes to opt out. Yes to opt out.
Yes to opt out.
That's the ordinance that's on the table, opt-out ordinance.
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Ms. Pisker?
Yes.
Mayor Bunnasie?
I think there's a lack of information, whether it be to the good or to the bad, so therefore I'm going to abstain.
All right, let's go on to the resolutions.
Okay, well, the one thing I want to do is put this resolution there.
The next resolution's 57.
No, no, after the ones you have.
Uh, 65.
Okay, I want to suggest that you adopt Resolution 65 of 2021, referring the ordinance that you just adopted on first reading to the planning board for their statutory review under the municipal land use law. Does somebody want to make that motion?
Make a motion, we adopt Resolution 65.
I don't have 65 on my sheet here.
No, it's just.
Sir, a second?
Second.
We'll call this.
Mr. Dilch?
Yeah.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Ms. Pasker?
Yes.
Mayor Bunnasia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am.
Looking down to the resolutions, we have Resolution 57 to appoint the Jeff Fund Commissioner.